How about now? Can everybody hear me now? Thank you very much. Okay. We'll call as many in order. Ms. Whitby, if you'd call, roll.
Yes, sir. Ross.
Here.
White.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Robinson.
Here.
Baxter.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Height.
Here.
I understand Witcher is absent. But Coram is present, sir.
Thank you very much. I invite you to stand as Councilmember Beth White will lead us in prayer and pledge.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank you that we are renewed every day by you. Lord, let us pause for just a moment to remember those people in Houston and Texas in general, Lord, with the difficulties they're going through. Lord, when you are involved in city work, Lord, you can only imagine what it's like each day for those people. So, Father, we pray a blessing on that and, Lord, that the rain ends soon. Father, I thank you for this city and the city council, Lord. I'm grateful to have the opportunity to help make decisions for this city. Lord, I pray a blessing on everything we decide to do and, Lord, we just love you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved. Second. On the motion.
The minutes of the previous meeting. Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Thank you. Communications, I'm showing two. Anybody want to pull a communication? Seeing none.
We've accepted file one and two.
How about a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We've got a couple of presentations tonight. We'll start out first with Margaret Powell and give us an update on our Sister Cities and a quick presentation. Ms. Powell.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We have completed the 17th year of our Sister City Youth Exchange Summer Program. It was very busy, especially busy this year because my husband and I hosted two of the students and had several of our grandkids come and stay with us and be host. And so, it was a lot of fun and what we're going to do tonight is just, I'd like for you to understand this program and understand that it is an exchange program. Next summer, we are hoping that things are settled down and that we're able to send our students to South Korea because every one of them who've hosted this summer would hope to go. The experiences that these young people and the families have seem to center around some common themes. I always ask them if they will to write a letter and to give us an idea of what they liked about the program. If they didn't like something, I've offered that to them too. But they usually talk about cultural diversity and they learn a lot about the globalness of our world and they learn about where South Korea is. They learn about geography. They learn about international travel and education and language. So, we have letters of reflection that we have already put on your desk. Everybody has one of these and I do invite you to flip through here and enjoy some of the remarks and a few of the pictures. The pictures turned out kind of dark, but the first thing I'm going to do is introduce Grant Smith. Grant is a student at the North Little Rock High School. He was a mentor last winter and enjoyed the experience enough that he wanted to host this year. His letter was excellent and Grant has agreed to read his letter. So, we tried to edit it down a little bit, but it's a great letter and I want you all to hear what he has to say. So, Grant, thank you for being here.
Hi. I signed up for the Sister City program because in the winter I was a mentor to a kid named Kyung Ching or he went by Timothy. I loved my experience with him, so it really made me want to host when the next opportunity came available. A few months later, I signed up and then Young Woo Lee or Gun came off the plane. I knew I would gain another friend, but what I did not know is how much I would learn about him, Korea, and this world. I felt so much closer to Gun than I thought I would. He was not just a friend, he was a part of my family and I have missed him a lot every day since he have left. He would tell me what we Americans would do that was odd to him. For instance, his American name was Gun, so I offered to take him to the gun range to shoot since it's illegal in Korea. He refused to go. I thought, I laughed every time because his name was Gun and he didn't even want to shoot one. Gun really taught me how they act over there and I look forward to using these skills when I travel to Uwong City next year. The thing I learned most from this program, however, is that no matter where we are from, we are all the same. I expected for him to act entirely different from me, but he was no different than any other friend I have in America. I love that I had the opportunity to learn this at an early age. Every culture has unique things about them, but these differences should not bring, tear people apart. I expected for him, I'm sorry, so many people today, from what I observe, feel to appreciate different cultures. Through this program, my eyes have been opened. I feel like now as I'm about to go to college and then the real world, I can look at the world differently. This program has given me a gift I never knew I wanted. I learned just how similar we all are when we get to know each other. I cannot thank the City of North Little Rock officials enough for offering this program and I can't thank you anymore. It has changed the way I looked at this world. Thank you.
Thank you, Grant. I think you absolutely hit the nail on the head as far as why we've supported this program for the last 17 years. So, thank you for those kind words and we hope that there's another 17 years in our future that we're going to support this program. So, thank you very much.
I'm going to just give a little credit to, we had all but three of the young people send us letters, so I'm just going to hit a couple of high points. Hayden wrote, "This is the summer, the second time for my family and I got the opportunity to participate this year. The first year, my sister was the host and this was my chance." He says, "Being a host helped me to better appreciate the city of North Little Rock. I enjoy getting to show dong-ha around our city. Thank you so much, City Council, for your support. It allows both young, both youth in both cities to broaden their horizons and make new friends. I will forever be grateful that my family and I got to be a part of this program." I loved getting to show Alice some of our common dance moves in America and she showed me hers. Actually, I loved listening to K-pop during our car ride, something I never had heard before and it was actually pretty fun, even though I couldn't understand a word that was being sung. The Sister City has brought me so much, a new lifelong sister, a new perspective and a desire to learn more about other cultures. I can't thank the city of North Little Rock enough for providing this opportunity. I'm truly grateful and very excited for the chance to visit South Korea next summer." That was Maggie. Anna Marie said, "One of the best things I got out of the program was being exposed to a language that is totally different from anything I've ever had. It is so vital in today's world to be able to communicate with people all over the world. I've never been out of the States, but the Sister City program is giving me a chance to travel to Korea next summer." Thank you. The first night when Stephen came out of the airport, we began to talk about sports and watching movies and what we like to eat and even though we did not fully understand each other, we were already on the same page. Stephen felt like my family. Now that he's gone, eating breakfast without him feels lonely. Now, this is from a kid who just can really hardly get up. I can testify to that. He usually can't get up for breakfast, but he was up every morning wanting to have breakfast with his friend. He said, "Having him in America felt right. Stephen was unselfish, caring, kind, and responsible. His example set here in America makes me want to set an example in South Korea." Thank you, Mayor and City Council and Uwong City and everyone who made this possible. That was Alex. Molly said, "Our family's been a part of the Sister City program for three years now and we have hosted five girls. The program has taught me many things about the Korean culture, mainly we are a lot alike. Through this program, my family has made lifelong friends that we will communicate with on a regular basis forever. I look forward to having the same opportunity that my sister and my dad had and going to Uwong next summer." Josh said, "I loved hanging out with Stephen and all the Koreans and making new friends. I learned so much about him and besides speaking completely different languages, we are not that different. I learned he loves to play basketball and that's one of the main sports in America. One time, I tried to teach him about football and he had no idea what I was talking about." Our cultures are very different, but that should not change the way you treat them. You should treat them the same way you treat everyone else. Since he has gone, I've really missed him and I'm watching and listening closer to the news on North Korea now because he lives there." Thank you and he's looking forward to go to South Korea. So, those are just little tidbits of the letters. You've got their full letters in your packets and I just thank you for the opportunity. It's a real delight for me to get to work with these young people and to see the way that they blossom in just a couple of days. They become very responsible and those who probably have never really had to take a friend and make sure that they are comfortable and have all the conveniences and understand how to use all of the facilities and make them at home. I think it really helps these kids grow up and it does offer a lot of opportunities to find out that people in the world are not so different if you just take time to get to know them. So, thank you all very much for supporting this program and we look forward to having an opportunity to send our young people to South Korea next summer.
Thank you, Margaret. Grant, thank you very much. Young man, you're a shining star for North Little Rock. Thank you. Margaret, great program and another great year. Thank you for all your hard work. Okay. Some of our Boy Scouts are here. Boy Scout Troop 18, working on their citizenship in the community merit badge and Scoutmaster Thomas Wilkins, Assistant Scout Managers Stuart Carlson, Andrew Thomas, our own Mike Holly, Doug Bennett. You guys, wow, what a great crowd. Scoutmaster Thomas, do you want to come up and kind of tell us what's going on and what your guys are going to learn tonight?
And maybe get a picture with all of them with you?
Absolutely. I'll come down and we'll get a picture.
Well, thank you for having us out. What we're here doing is, one of our merit badges we earned for Eagle Scout rank is citizenship in the community, which is figure out how our community operates, what goes on, what you find people do around here and all that, how it all works and interacts so that they are better citizens. So, we thank you all for letting us come out and take part in this tonight.
This group was the group that did the painting underneath the interstate at the basketball court?
Yes, sir. That was one of our Eagle projects a few weeks ago. They did the basketball goal under Interstate 30 out there and I believe we have several of the guys that were out there here tonight also.
Great. Well, I would like to, if I get you guys to come up, I'll come down and we'll stand right here in front of the TV and let everybody see you and then we'll get a picture, mate. Ms. Whitby, I'm showing a scheduled public hearing.
Yes, sir.
For the North Little Rock Police Department application for 2017 Edward Byrne Justice Assistance Grant. Do you know what we need to do other than just calling for the grant and see if there's public comment? That's all we need, Captain? Okay. I'm going to call a public hearing on the Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant. Anyone here that would like to speak on that grant? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Okay. Let's go into public comments on legislation for tonight. First one is Greg Mueller to speak on 1763 and 59. Do you want to wait, Greg? Okay. How about Robert Bryant? 17154, do you want to speak, Robert? You want to wait until the legislation comes up if there's any questions? Where is Robert? Okay. Elizabeth Colwell, 17149, and Kaylin, 17149. Pamela McQuade, 1766. Lisa Farrell. Okay. So, everyone that's waiting is waiting to answer questions. Is that my right? Is there anybody here that wants to make a statement about this legislation?
I believe Ms. McQuade had questions about the alley on the one that she signed up for. Is that right?
Okay.
Yeah.
Ms. McQuade, you want to come up and if you're not here to answer questions, if you're here to make statements, please.
I just had a question, how this would affect me on the abandoned alley on West Fourth Street there.
Okay. Have you talked to any of our staff about this, our planning staff or anything like that?
Yes, we had talked to, I can't remember his name.
Sean Spencer, maybe?
Yes.
Yeah. Did he explain to you what was going on and?
I think he said he really didn't know.
Okay. The...
I hadn't talked to her, so I didn't say that.
That's my guy that works for me. I'll run for you.
Sean, no better time than now to explain it.
So, they're closing the south half of the property and the Jacksons own both sides of it. So, there's four lots about that part of the property that they're closing and they own all that. Right now, it's undeveloped, it's dirt, it's a dirt path right now, so it's not really being used as an alley. I mean, it's clear and someone could drive a truck through it, but it's not paved or gravelled or anything. It's just dirt and grass right now. So, they're asking to close the south half of it, which does not touch Ms. McQuade's or any of the other properties on the north half of the property.
So, you'll still have access to your property? Won't change a bit? Matter of fact, the alley will be improved.
So, they're actually going to make it so a fire truck can run down it. So, it will be 15 foot wide? 15 foot wide. Right now, it's, like I said, it's dirt.
Well, anytime we close the alley anyway, the budding property owners...
Correct. But they're only closing the south half.
Yeah.
So, the north half will still be a public alley.
Is that possible? Yeah. Look at the map that's attached to legislation. It pretty much explains it.
The red parts being closed and 1306 here.
Okay. Well, it seems we're just going to close the whole thing, but... Okay. Okay, Ms. McQuade?
Okay. When they close that end of the alley, that means that nobody can come in from that side anymore?
That's correct.
And so, there's going to be a gate there.
It's going to be a fire entrance, I believe. Yeah. Ms. Ross?
I know this is just public comment, but I was at the planning meeting and it was my understanding that you can't get down that alley now because there's curbs. It's not, you know, there's not an opening there to get through. So, you're basically driving over the curb if you go over it now.
Right.
So, it's unusable right now and has been.
I think we're ready to move into consent agenda. Aren't we, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir.
Well, let's do that. Anybody want to pull anything out of the consent agenda?
140, and we want to talk about 149. Is that...
No. We talked about it last week.
I wouldn't hear. Can we talk about it tonight?
If you insist.
Please.
Okay. All right. How about all those in favor accepting 143 through 148, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Let me see, we have two appointments. Chris Dunkum, is Chris in the audience? I want to thank Chris for agreeing to serve on the Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. If he's at home listening, please get with our city clerk to be able to get sworn in. And Raymond Wells, is Raymond in the audience? Raymond, same for you. Thank you for your service. Okay, Ms. Whitby, if you'll call, R. 17149.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with AR Trison Group LLC, AR Trison Farms LLC, and Kaylin Tankersley individually for the removal and cleanup of recycled concrete on property located at 12602 Faulkner Lake Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
How about a motion? So moved. How about a second?
Second.
So, this is related to this memorandum that's on my desk, correct?
I didn't see what memo you have.
Agreement to allow removal of recycled concrete at Faulkner Lake Road. Okay. So, see if I've got this correct. Back in February, we did not approve their application for...
That's correct.
Okay. But yet, they went ahead and...
That's correct.
Did it anyway.
That's right. And we have given them a ticket. They are scheduled to go to court in front of the judge and the judge will determine what the punishment for that is. It would be, that would be the responsibility of the judge anyway, but we have all that refuge there that needs to be moved and so we agreed a voice vote last week to allow them to get in there and remove what they've already crushed up.
So, this resolution tonight, what does it do?
It's given them permission to move all the crushed concrete by November the...
November the 30th, I believe it says right here.
Yeah. And most of that concrete, if not all of it, goes right back to the Highway Department contractor to finish 440.
And if they don't move it back to 440, then what happens?
Well, I don't know. We've got...
The Highway Department, they need it to finish that project?
Well, certainly they do. I mean, they had planned on it and I didn't want to...
Are they paying the Tankersley for the concrete?
Excuse me?
Are the Tankersley receiving any...
Oh, sure they are, yeah.
So, did they say, "Oops, we made a mistake and made a big fat profit" after it? Did they say anything about that?
They didn't say that. We rehashed all that last week. I wish you had been here, it was really nice.
Well, I wasn't able to be here, you know. So, I'm just curious as to...
The judge will decide what the penalties are, not us.
And we make recommendations to the judge what the penalties should...
Absolutely.
You know?
You want to do that now or would you like to...
Well, I would like, I'd like, you know, they can listen to my recommendation or do whatever they want to with it, but I think the recommendation for the fine should be what profit they made off of this crushing the concrete without permission. That would be my recommendation.
Okay. Send that in the minutes to the judge, will you?
Please.
All right. Any other comments?
Do we know when the court date is?
September, isn't it?
September 21st.
September 21st? Yeah.
I'll try to be there.
On the motion.
On the motion to adopt, Ross.
My vote is based on the fact that I think that we should have waited till after the court date. No.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
And Height.
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Let's go into new business.
New business, R. 17150, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a memorandum of agreement with North Little Rock School District and Habitat for Humanity regarding certain property located on the 4,800 and 4,900 blocks of Allen Street in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
So moved.
Second.
The, what we're planning on doing right there is we've applied for a grant to tear down the old North Heights Elementary School and the school district has agreed to help us in this. Then Habitat is going to come in where those, where the old school used to be and build five or six brand-new houses.
Move for adoption.
Have a second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Point of order, then we already moved for that to be adopted and seconded already?
Yes, you did.
I wasn't paying attention.
Yes, you did.
Yes.
Yes.
So, I was acknowledging the first one and ignoring the second one.
Yes.
Okay. Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R. 17151, Councilmembers Ross and White.
Please call it.
A resolution appropriating additional funds for completion of the storm drain replacement project in Glenmere Road in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R. 17152, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution authorizing application by the North Little Rock Police Department for funds under the 2017 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant Program.
Move for adoption.
Second. On the motion.
Ross.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
Baxter.
Yes.
Harris.
Yes.
And Height.
Yes.
R. 17153.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at the 5417 Maple Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
Move for adoption. About a second.
Second.
We'll call a public hearing. Anyone here to speak on 5417 Maple Street?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
My name's Terrance Harshaw.
Yes, sir.
The place has been cleaned, the outside has been cleaned up, just the inside, the exterior hasn't. I've got a contractor who's going to want to pull a permit and get started on it, work on it immediately.
Okay. Mr. Harshaw, do you realize that in this particular situation, you need to come in and put up a bond guaranteeing that you will do the work and do the renovation?
I didn't know that, but I will.
Okay. What you need to do is go to our legal department, which is at, what's the address over there? 200...
Normally, we meet at Code Enforcement's where, so we'll have an attorney go down there to meet to do rehab agreements.
If you'll, if you'll get a hold of code, they'll bring our lawyers down there and they'll do a rehab agreement, and you'll have to sign and put up a cash bond, and you'll have X number of days, what is that normally?
Well, so, for completion of the project is six months, there are time benchmarks that have to be met along the way, that, the issue being that this has been a continual public nuisance to the city, and we're trying to abate that as quickly as possible. So, we want to make a timeframe that's doable, if you, if you saw early in our agenda by consent, city council uncondemned a piece of property where somebody, you know, got a rehab agreement and they finished the project like we want, like, like it was supposed to be finished, and pleased the world, so we're hopeful that you'll be able to get a rehab agreement and do the same thing with this property.
It'll be thirty days before we start processing this, we're going to condemn it tonight, council votes that way, but you'll have, you know, you need to get down there quickly and get your rehab done, and then we'll hold off on the condemnation and the tearing it down.
Okay, no, we're not going to need to go down there tomorrow, or?
Yeah, call code enforcement tomorrow, and they'll guide you in which way to go.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you. On the motion.
Did you adjourn the public hearing?
No, I didn't, anybody else want to speak on that? Close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R. seventeen, one fifty-four, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at forty-four oh eight School Street in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owners to abate said nuisance.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing on forty-four oh eight School Street, Mr. Bryant, did you want to speak on this?
I had a contractor to come over there and give me an estimation on it today, he's supposed to be getting started on tomorrow.
Okay.
He want to do the outside first, and then he going to go on the inside.
All right, do you understand what I said to Mr. Harshaw, that you, in order to do that, you need to come down and get a rehab permit and put up a bond? The, we will, we will not hold down the condemnation without a bond.
Okay.
So, you need to call code enforcement in the morning, and our city attorneys will meet you up there and work out a cash bond with you and give you the six months to rehab it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm here on behalf of Carrington, which is the mortgage servicer on the property, so I just wanted to make my presence known, and we'll speak with the, Mr. Bryant.
Okay, you see what we're doing.
Sir, what is your name?
Brian Saputo.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else? Close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White? Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R. seventeen, one fifty-five, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at eight oh seven Greenlee Drive in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
How about a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Call a public hearing, eight oh seven Greenlee Drive in North Little Rock, anyone here to speak on that? Seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R. seventeen, one fifty-six, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution declaring certain buildings, houses, and other structures located at twenty-two oh four point five East Washington Avenue Apartments A, B, C, and D in the city of North Little Rock to constitute a public nuisance and condemning said structures, providing a period of time for property owner to abate said nuisance.
So move.
Second.
Call a public hearing, anyone here to, to talk about twenty-two oh four point five East Washington? Seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross? White?
Slow down, I have a question.
Ross?
Isn't this the same one, didn't we just condemn, just do a lien on some property, the same individual that we just, seems like, just like last week, last council meeting or something, so, my answer is yes, I'm just saying that this is not the first time.
Okay.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R. seventeen, one fifty-seven, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution approving and certifying amounts of liens to be filed with the Blasky County Tax Collector against certain real properties in the city of North Little Rock, Arkansas, as a result of grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances.
Move for adoption.
Second. Call a public hearing, anyone here to speak on these grass-cutting expenses and abatement of other nuisances? Seeing none, close the public hearing, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
R. seventeen, one fifty-eight, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
A resolution supporting federal and state legislation to ensure the proper assessment and collection of tax, sales tax from all internet and online sales, thereby creating a fair and free market for all businesses and consumers, regardless of the location of the business from which the purchase was made.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Second.
I think everyone knows what this is, there's been numerous, I think, Ms. Ross, there was fifty, seventy-five cities that have already done this, and we're adding our name to the list to encourage our legislators to vote for this, the governor's told us that if we can get enough votes, we were six short during the session, we can get enough votes that he would consider doing a special call, and so, we are letting him know and our legislators know that we are in support of this. So, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Ordnance is O. seventeen fifty-nine, Mayor Smith.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow car sales lot in a C-four zone for property located at twenty-nine oh six MacArthur Drive in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
How about a motion?
Uh, move to suspend the readings.
How about a second?
Second.
I got a motion to suspend all readings, on the motion.
Ross?
I have some discussion on this, though.
Okay.
Since this is for consideration only, and one of the questions that I've had, you know, there only be allowed five cars to be sold on that lot, and there's a current building-
Hang on, the motion on the floor, though, is to suspend the readings.
Oh, sorry.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Ms. Ross?
White, can I talk?
You can now, I'm sorry, I apologize.
But my question, they can only sell five cars on this lot, and there's a current building there that is, I don't know, I mean, that building would have to be brought up to code, is that correct? The current building, because I know they're required to have a restroom, and, and then there was a discussion about bringing a portable building in for an office, and so I was just kind of-
We'll see.
That, that building wouldn't, they'll have to tear that down and bring in some sort of a new building that would be reviewed by the Planning Commission.
Okay, now, they will have to have a restroom also there, correct?
They would have to have a public restroom for the staff and for any public that would come in.
Okay, so, I guess portable buildings have that when they bring them in, or, I don't, I just-
I don't know if there's, is there plumbing there, Greg?
I just didn't know if the applicant understood all the things that were required.
Is there, is there plumbing in all that, Greg?
There, there is, you know, drain line, there's water, you know, there's electric to that existing building. As I understand it, Mr. Moulden was talking about trying to, to bring that to code so that he could utilize that for restroom, and he was, he was also talking about bringing with him another building that he's using down the street in, on the leased property that he's about to lose, so.
This has been a used car lot for years, hasn't it?
Well, it, it's, it's been a number of years since we've had anything there, it was a service station originally, and it has been a used car lot, most, you know, the most recent use has been that, although I'd say it's probably been fifteen years since we've had some, you know, someone lease it. It's been a difficult property to lease because of the arduous task of, you know, getting a special use permit, you know, even though it's on C-four, so.
Is that next door to where the hamburger place used to be, isn't it?
There's a Chinese restaurant that's right next door to it.
The south of it, yeah.
Yeah, to the south.
On the north end of it, there was-
And we, we lost a lot of, you know, to the state right-of-way, it goes back inside the property quite a bit, so there's not a lot of room to do much of a building there.
Ms. White?
Um, I had a question, I don't know if I got an answer on it, there's existing tanks underneath this that used to be used for fuel, are those just left intact?
No, I don't think, I don't think there's any, I think the tanks have all been removed.
Because the concrete's still there?
Yes, yeah. But I don't think they were underneath, you know, the tanks were the, the driveway, you know, I believe all that's been removed.
Now, I almost think a, a new, a new building there would probably be additioned and leaving it vacant like it is right now, so that was one reason.
Well, you know, I, I agree, but, you know, it's a matter of, of economics as far as being able to afford, you know, that on a small car lot, you know, so he's, I, I think his plan, Mr. Moulden could probably speak for himself on what he's, he's planning on doing, but he, you know, he's been down the street for thirty-eight years on MacArthur there, and would like to move his business up there to this location, he's been pretty persistent about trying to pursue this process, and you can speak about what, what your plan is there?
Yes, how y'all doing?
Fine, thanks.
Yes, Carl ain't bought the property, I have been there for thirty-eight years, and I was just trying to relocate, I'm not trying to have a big business, no more than five or six cars, and, and, and that's about it.
What kind of, are you prepared to, to move a building in there and furnish restrooms and water and?
Yes, sir, I'm, I'm prepared to do whatever's necessary, whatever the city asks me to do, I'm prepared to, to do it, and I wouldn't open the business until it's complete. The business is complete.
Sure, okay, Ms. Ross?
One of my questions, too, is when you say you're going to bring a building in, I mean, is it going to look like you just brought a building, do they have to be underpinned, and, I mean, as far as aesthetics, Sean, is that-
The Plan, the Planning Commission would review all that and make those requirements, and those are normal requirements.
Okay, because I don't look-
Some landscaping and some underpinning and paving and-
Right, so they can make it-
Everything else, so it'd be treated just as a brand-new commercial building, so it'll be all codes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I guess I'm confused, so, who, who, who's the owner and who's, who's the applicant, I mean, what's-
I'm the owner, Maurice.
Okay.
He's the applicant.
Well, he's, he's the owner of the business, we're, we're the owner of the land.
It's Ashley, Ashley Group.
It's a ground lease, and so it would be his responsibility to, to take care of what it is.
Oh, so, gr, okay, so, thank you.
There you go.
Okay, Ms. Ross?
I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Moulden understands, too, that in here, you know, when he said five cars when I was at the planning meeting, that includes, Sean, does that also include the employees in that five cars?
Correct.
Okay, and visitors, I mean, customers, I guess?
Uh, that's-
That's-
It should be worded that way.
That's not very many.
I don't, I've been doing this for thirty-eight years.
So you're, okay.
I've been doing this for thirty-eight years right here at twenty-two oh six Pike.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't have a big car lot, so, I just turned six once, so I'm just trying to,
Okay.
you know, have something to, just to keep going, not, not nothing big or nothing major.
I just want to make sure that you understand that, you know, the six is the total of employees, that's your car, any customers' cars, because, you know, regulations have changed a lot over the years, so I just want to make sure that you understand that, because I don't even-
I understand everything about that, just now.
If we, when we, if we approve this, then he's got to go back to planning.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
So, what's the current zoning on this property?
C-four.
And we're, and we're considering a conditional use?
Correct, the zoning ordinance in C-four requires car lots to be conditional use.
Anybody else? On the motion.
There is no motion.
How about a motion? Well, we got, we got, we waived all readings, how about a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
O. seventeen sixty, Councilmember Baxter.
Please call it.
An ordinance to reclassify property located at forty-one Collins Industrial Place in the city of North Little Rock from I-two to C-three to allow commercial development by amending ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings, and without objection, I'd like to add Councilmember Harris to the legislation.
How about a second?
Second.
Okay.
How about a motion to suspend all readings, Ms. Whitby?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Questions, comments, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris? And Height?
Yes.
Oh seventeen sixty-one, Councilmember Baxter.
Move to suspend all readings, please, or please call it, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself like Alderman Ross was earlier.
An ordinance to reclassify property located at Councils Massey Road east of the Villas at Northwood Creek in the city of North Little Rock from R four to R O to allow for a zero lot line residential subdivision by amending ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven, first reading.
Now I'd like to suspend all readings and without objection, add Alderman, excuse me, Councilmember Harris to the legislation.
Okay.
Without objection, on the motion to suspend all readings, how about a second? Do we get a second?
Second.
All right, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Motion.
Now move for adoption.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Oh seventeen sixty-two, Councilmember Baxter.
Please call it.
An ordinance to reclassify property located at fifty-six oh nine MacArthur Drive in the city of North Little Rock from R four to C three to allow retail development by amending ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings and once again, please, without objection, add Councilmember Harris to the legislation.
Okay. Second?
Where is this?
Oh seventeen sixty-two.
Yeah, hold on a second. Let me get in here. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, okay.
Second.
Okay, all right. All right, we got a motion and a second to suspend all readings on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Move for adoption.
How about a second?
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height? Oh seventeen sixty-three, Councilmember Height?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a special use to allow animal boarding in a C three zone for property located at seventy-four twenty-two North Hills Boulevard in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend all readings.
Second.
On the motions to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Before I make my motion to adopt, I went over there today to Hound, the Hounds Lounge. This, it's like walking into a Omni Hotel over there. Anybody been over there to see this place? I mean, this is a nicer, this is nicer than some hotels that I've stayed in in recent months. This place is really nice, you know, and they got a day spa for dogs and, what was it, Justin, you out there? How many was it, forty-five, forty-eight hotel rooms over there?
Forty-three.
Forty-three, excuse me, excuse me. This is, this is something that if y'all looked on social media in the last few months that is really needed in the city of North Little Rock or in surrounding, in our county, so I'm making my motion now for adoption.
Okay, how about a second?
Second.
Mr. Taylor.
So this is a budding residential, correct?
It's in a, it's in a commercial, yes. It's, I think if I'm correct, Sherwood backs up to that piece of property.
Actually, that's North Little Rock.
Anyway.
So... I guess my question is, are the, and we're boarding dogs?
Yes.
So... My office is right next door to a similar operation, and there are certain times of the day and certain times of the night where there's a lot of dogs barking.
That's a kennel. Totally different.
Regardless, there's still a lot of dogs barking.
Totally different.
So are there any measures in place where, I mean, will these dogs ever be outside where they're...
The applicant's here, you want to have him answer your question?
Somebody, not me who answers it.
Yeah, because I'm here saying dogs living in hotels don't bark.
Good evening, I'm Justin Harris, I'm the owner of Hound's Lounge. We currently have a location in Riverdale right now that the actual residential houses are actually closer than this potential second location. We don't have any issues at nighttime as far as the dogs boarding. Our operations are seven AM to seven PM, so by seven PM, the dogs will be no longer outside, and they'll be no longer let outside before the seven AM period as well. You know, there was concerns over there when we first opened that spot as well, but I can assure you, Charlie saw today, the dogs play off-leash for twelve hours throughout the day, and believe it or not, during holiday times when we have fifty or sixty dogs boarding at nighttime, if you show up at eleven o'clock, I mean, you can hear a pin drop in there, that's honest to God's truth. Now, during the day, obviously, dogs are permitted to go inside and outside for, you know, bathroom breaks and that kind of stuff, so there is noise during the day, but like I said, seven PM is the cutoff time in which dogs are permitted to go outside.
Ms. Ross?
This location, the outdoor areas beside the car wash, it's not...
Correct, it's on the east side of the property.
The residential is, how far would you say the residential, it's, you know, there's trees and it's...
There's a whole green zone back there, I'm not quite sure of the exact dimensions, do you have any idea, John? Seventy-five to a hundred feet of just thick brush, I mean, I can barely see a house through there, had you not told me, I didn't realize there were houses even back there, but apparently there is.
Ms. White?
One question I had when I first saw this, I'm pretty familiar with boarding dogs, and so if a dog, a dog doesn't need to be, to be potted, as they say, after seven PM, is that correct?
No, we do have someone on property twenty-four hours a day, so in there, those rare need-be cases where the dog is sick, you know, we have to accommodate that dog, but on normal, typical situations, I mean, we find that most dogs can make it through the evening.
Okay, that's good. If my dog was there, he'd be the one barking, I think.
It would surprise you, they play so hard, but like I said, there's someone there twenty-four hours a day that does combat a lot of that uncertainty as far as dogs, anxiety and, you know...
When I was over there today, I didn't notice, I didn't even notice a dog barking while I was over there today. And didn't you tell me that you, you have an interview with your clients and troublemakers in my lab?
Absolutely, part of the process is, the first day of dog daycare is a socialization test, I know it seems crazy, Mr. Taylor.
Yeah, it does, but go ahead.
I mean, pets aren't pets anymore, I mean, they are an extension of the family now, and folks let them sleep in the bed, they go on family vacations, I mean, they're not just dogs anymore. So obviously, every first day at Hound's Lounge is a socialization test, just to make sure that that specific dog is adequate for group play. The last thing we want to do is inject a canine that's either not sociable or a little bit too aggressive, that potentially could damage or prohibit, you know, a peaceful day of general population play.
Ms. Ross?
Justin, are you also going to have the, again, self-service bathing or whether, where you can bring your dog?
Yes, we do, we do offer a DIY self-washing base where an individual can bring, basically, we asked you to bring a muddy, wet, dirty mutt, we provide all the shampoos, conditioners, brushes, dryers, you bathe the dog, take home a clean puppy, and leave a big mess for us to clean up.
Ms. Robinson?
Have there been any complaints, concerns from the neighbors?
Not a single one, and I wasn't at the planning commission, you were at the planning commission, was there any opposition to it? No.
Yes, ma'am?
Well, I have a question, since you're boarding, does the animal shelter come out and do inspections?
Uh, no.
Okay, I think on boarding facilities, they do, so are you okay with them coming out to do that?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
On the one question, we didn't receive any calls and no one was at the meeting. No opposition of it.
I didn't hear you.
Sorry, we received zero phone calls, the planning department received zero phone calls, and no one showed up in opposition to it at the meeting, at the planning commission meeting.
Okay, on the motion?
Wait, did you get a second?
Yes.
On the motion?
Yes, there's a second, the motion to adopt, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
And just FYI, on, when you come in to get your business license, you'll need to have that animal inspection first.
Okay.
So you can either call us, or, and we can arrange that, or call them.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh seventeen sixty-four, Councilmember Ross?
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a special use to allow a tow lot in an R three zone for property located at nineteen twenty North Locust Street in the city of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move the readings, please, on, move the, no, yeah, suspend the readings.
How about a second?
Second.
Motion to suspend the readings, on the motion?
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
How about a motion?
Somebody.
And a second?
Second.
And a question, Ms. White?
Um, I have an amendment.
You have an amendment, okay.
My amendment is, in section two B, the way it's written is existing fence with razor wire is allowed to remain, and I would like to change that to remove the razor wire, or the existing fence with razor wire is to be removed. That's my amendment.
Okay. What was? Norman?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman, this property is at nineteen twenty North Locust Street, and it's the property that the council approved for the North Rock High School and Baldwin and Shell Construction Company to house all their material while they were rebuilding the North Rock High School. The council approved the fence, and the council approved the razor wire for that property for security reasons, and it's gone through, and we have the same security problems there in that neighborhood as you did whenever you approved it for the North Rock School District and Baldwin and Shell. So I would ask that the razor wire be allowed still, and also, there's a sundown clause on this, and I would like for it to be left in place until that sundown clause is gone if the, if the council so approves me to use this property.
They, I'll make a comment there, in negotiations with, with Norman, we put the sundown clause on there because we're not sure, and we're trying to get East Gate possibly either purchased and torn down and new, and then the interstate's going to be coming through there, so it's, the construction is going to be, you know, awful, so I could live with this lot being there for three years, is that what we put on it?
Yes, sir.
And so he was kind enough to approach it that way, so that's, that's why we ended up going that way. So, any questions, Mr. Clifton, while he's up there, if not, we got a motion to amend from Ms. White, do I have a second?
On the motion to amend?
Second.
Can I ask someone?
Sure.
Ms. Bernie's here from the Dark Hollow, can I ask, before I vote, I want to hear her comments.
Good evening, the only comment I have is that the concerns that the mayor just addressed be, because of a East Gate being torn down, and we're trying to revitalize the neighborhood. Also, there is a daycare that will be there in that Pine School that I had a concern with the wire and the safety of the children that will be there.
Okay, that's a six-foot fence, isn't it?
Yes, sir, Mayor, it is, and I sold the property that she is referring to, and the people that bought the property has indicated to me that they would not put a daycare in there, there was already one in there whenever I bought the property, and they removed that, and it's my understanding that they are going to have an after-school type ministry there, or children to come from the East Gate Terrace properties there for after-school. That's what I've been told whenever they bought the property from me. Also, if there were to be a daycare put in there, there is a requirement for daycares that any outside playground out of the building would require...
Beth.
...a chain-link fence or a opaque fence that would enclose the area that might, that might be a playground for children.
Okay, Ms. Taylor, Ms. Robinson, I'm sorry.
Well, I want to speak about the barbed wire, and when North Little Rock High School was under construction, you know, we did allow them to leave that barbed wire there, and, and it was for a safety reason and all, and so with these cars being there, and you know, I'm not a fond, I'm not fond of car lots, but this is not a car lot, I think this is for repos, cars that are repossessed, and I've heard people looking for their cars, going to, you know, trying to find out who has the car or where the car is located to go get their car back. Now, I've heard stories about that, so my thing is, and no disrespect to my peer, but this is just for three years, and after three years, this whole thing goes away, so for safety concerns and, and for people to not show up to get their car back, I would much rather allow this for three years, and after three years, it would just go away.
Ms. White?
Just for clarification, I do have a picture of it, and I apologize that you all can't see it, but there are three rows of razor wire, one at the top, one in the middle, and one at the bottom, this is pretty, pretty well razor-wired, so my objection to having razor wire is I just think it's too close to a neighborhood, I realize what Ms. Robinson said, and I see value in that, but I still, it's not something I like to see at the entrance of our city, to see that, I know it's been there, but it, this is an opportunity to have it gone.
Mr. Taylor?
So is there an opportunity to move the bottom two strands or leave the top strand, and would the applicant be object to that, or would you rather have all three strands?
Well, Alderman, I'm sure you're aware that a pair of bolt cutters, in thirty seconds, you can be in a fence.
I am aware of that.
Yes, sir, and so, you know, I, I would respectfully request that I be granted the same consideration that Baldwin and Shell in the North Rock School District had for their concerns.
Mr. Height? How many years has that barbed wire fence been up down there?
What, they've been building on the school over there for what, two and a half years?
Three years, almost?
Yes, sir.
Is the neighborhood any closer to that building now than it was two and a half years ago?
No, sir, not a bit.
Thank you.
And I did speak with Mr. Joe Moransky, he owned, he is the director of the Child Ministering Ministry that owns the building right in front of this property, and my fence is about a hundred and twenty-five feet away from his building, I explained to him exactly what I wanted to do over there, and the provisions that we had talked about putting in, about trying to control the property, and I assured him that if he ever had a problem with the tenant that I have in there, he could see me and I would deal with it for him. So he told me that today, that as I've explained it to him, that he could not see where it would affect his, his ongoing child mentoring ministry there at all.
Well, I'm kind of like Alderman Robinson is, that these cars back there are repos, people are going to, you know, but then again, some people may see that as a, a lot where they can get a spare part for their automobile, too, and so I think security is a, could be an issue there.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Ross?
I have two questions, one is from Mr. Spencer, too, as far as requirements for daycare, you know, you said that it wouldn't be a daycare, that it would be an after-school, there's different requirements, you know, the daycares we require, you know, the fencing and everything and that, now the after-school, does that not have a different requirements?
If DHS is involved, it's going to come through Planning Commission, and we'll put the conditions on it, but typically, we require a fence of some sort.
Even if it's just for after-school?
Well, and we'll take that, in fact, if they're all fourteen, fifteen-year-olds, you know, a fence isn't necessarily going to help, so we have waived the fence sometimes for the older group of kids. So if there's a basketball court, we'll, if there's a basketball court, we'll require a fence to keep the ball from going into the road or something, but it'll just be for that type of security.
Okay, and my other question is, you know, there's never been any mention of how many cars, so is this going to look like a mega car lot or something, this for Mr. Norman?
Alderman Ross, when the applicant first approached me about leasing this, he only needed two acres, so I, of course, would not be agreeable to split that in two, so I'm going to say that two acres of that four acres would suffice for his needs, so as far as how many cars you could put on two acres, I couldn't tell you that. But the nature of his operation is they are a nationwide repo company, and they repo cars from all in this general regional area, they take them into a lot, and they stay there for either thirty or sixty days, and the, the owner comes, pays, and takes the car out, or the finance company that has hired them comes and pays and takes the car out, or they deliver the car upon request of the finance company or whoever it is that they have picked the car up for. So it is an in-and-out operation all the time, it's, it's not cars that's going to drag in there and set and, and...
So they're going to need an office, then, an office building, there's no...
Yes, ma'am, in the, the site plan review will require a small portable office building, and that would be, come before the site plan review committee for the planning.
So you're going to have people come in, I didn't realize that there'd be people coming in and out, I thought it was just that they would bring them in and they would take them out, that they were actually individuals?
They have, they have one person that operates their office to receive monies and release cars and things like that.
Ms. Robinson?
Entrance into the yard, is it, will it be right off of Locust, then onto the yard, or would you have to turn down that, whatever street that is to get paint?
No, ma'am, it'll be right there on Locust, right where the construction company always used, there's a driveway there, and that will have to be approved in the gate entrance and everything by the fire department.
Okay.
Ms. White?
My last comment, though I see that the razor wire might be a hundred and fifty feet from the Step Building, from the Dream Center Building, I can say just from having looked at it recently, that it's maybe twenty-five feet, maybe thirty feet from the building, that the edge of that razor wire was where they touch here, so it's considerably closer to that building.
Ma'am, I said a hundred and twenty feet from the green building that's in front of this.
Right, the Step Ministry, right, exactly, but not the Dream Center Building or the Old Pine School.
Oh, the Dream Center Building, yes, ma'am.
It's very close.
Yes, it is closer.
Really, really close. A car length and a little bit is all it is, yeah. Okay, I just wanted that to be known. Thank you.
But that is a, that, what you're talking about there is an insert, around on the side that will not be used.
Ms. Ross?
One more question. The, to the, I don't know my east from my west. Anyway, if you're looking at the, the Dream Center on the right side, you know, they've got that long strip that comes down there that's part of this, this lot. Will cars be stored over there beside the Dream Center?
No, ma'am. That's what I was referring to.
So they will be, they will be back?
That entrance over there will not be used.
Okay.
So can that be, can that section of razor wire fencing be removed that's very close to the building?
If they're not going to be using it?
Using it?
If, Ms. White, if that would appease you, I would.
It's, I mean, it's really close to the building. I know that. I mean, I don't like razor wire, period. I can't change my heart on that one.
And, and of course, their ordinance is about razor wire.
Absolutely.
But, you know, the, the location that this is in and the precedent that the council had set before for this, I just can't see the difference in it.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Clifton, what if you extended the fence across that back, back part there? Just extend it and close off that area? And, and, but keep the razor wire on that portion of fence?
Yes, sir. I'd, I'd be glad to do that.
Sean, could you show me exactly where he's talking about? Because I, okay, that's where we're all talking about. Okay. Okay, that's what, okay, yeah, that's where I was talking about. Yep.
Did you see what that was, Beth?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Robinson?
Well, you, you know, things are just not necessarily clear to me. And what's not clear is, we allowed Baldwin and Shell to store stuff on that lot. We allowed it. This council allowed it. And I'm sure that the stuff that Baldwin and Shell had was just as much as important as these repo cars. And however the council vote tonight, I mean, it's up to you guys. But what I'd like to see is consistency. However we treat one, we should treat the other. I don't see, I don't see any extenuating circumstances that exist now that did not exist then. But because it was North Little Rock School District, you know, we allowed them to, to, you know, move forward. But I'm ready to vote.
Ms. Ross?
I think what we're trying to do is get to a compromise here. And I would be perfectly, I mean, I understand the need for the razor wire. I don't like the looks of it. But if we could bring that fence across and remove the razor wire that's right here beside the Dream Center along the, when you're looking at the left side, I mean, I don't know if Ms. Bernie, if she even has a map to look at what we're talking about. You're still going to have it along the backside, but it's going to remove from the, it's going to remove quite a bit along the Dream Center.
All right, Ms. White, what's your pleasure? You want to call your amendment vote?
I still will, yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend on the motion.
Ross?
No.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
And the amendment is to?
Remove the rest.
Remove all the razor wire? Uh, no.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
No.
Harris?
No.
Height?
No.
The motion failed.
Okay.
I have an amendment to remove that section on the right side. Is that east or west? I don't know.
The, the east side.
Okay.
Can you state the amendment, counselor?
I'm, I'm wanting to make sure that I understand the address of the building. It's got nineteen hundred on it.
Nineteen twenty North.
Quite right.
Nineteen hundred?
North Locust.
North Locust?
The legislation's nineteen twenty.
Locust way over there.
The face is east nineteenth.
You'd think that gymnasium there would be nineteen hundred, wouldn't you? Just on the corner.
I think the gymnasium would be nineteen hundred one pass.
It's nineteen hundred.
Really? Okay. Yeah, you're right. That front door's on Pine Street. You're right. Okay, yeah, nineteen hundred's going to be right there.
We're saying that's nineteen hundred North Locust?
Mm-hmm.
Nineteen, nineteen twenty is the address that I was given from.
Or your facility?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you, I got you, I got you. But I think what we're saying is, the amendment would be existing fence with razor wire is, existing fence with razor wire is allowed to remain except along eastern border of nineteen hundred North Locust.
Okay.
Yes.
That's my amendment.
Okay, we have an amendment and do we have a second?
Second.
On the motion.
And that's the entire eastern border?
The whole eastern side, right?
All right, so that would be the eastern border of nineteen hundred North Locust. So what that's saying is, go to the northeast corner from that point directly south. That fence would have to be removed.
Okay.
Okay, are you, you get that, Sean? And Mr. Clifton, you get it?
Yes, sir, I understand it. That's, that's correct.
Okay, all right.
Well, now, wait, I have a question.
All right.
Now, you said to remove all of the fence or just the razor wire?
The existing fence. Well, this says existing fence with razor wire. That's the way that it's worded right now. So what is it that you want?
I want the razor wire gone from there. I don't know if the Dream Center wants to keep that fence there. I don't know.
Oh, they, they would certainly want to keep their fence.
And because that blocks off traffic through their property. So I just want the razor wire removed from that property.
Okay, a motion and a second?
I don't think that the amendment right now, as proposed, accomplishes what it is that you're saying. Because the amendment as proposed says, remove the fence and the razor wire. And what you're saying is not.
No, because I don't think the Dream Center would want that removed.
Mr. Carter, would we not?
John?
Would we not say, remove the existing razor wire from the existing fence?
Yeah, but it's trying to put it into a separate section that, that is in direct conflict with the one that's...
From here. Well, this is what we talked about doing right here.
Just on one side of the?
Yes, sir. Just on the eastern side.
All of this? No, that whole, that whole. Sean?
I mean, I can live with either one of them. I mean, if you, if you put a new fence across there...
This, right in here. That. Right, you'd put a fence here and remove the razor wire here.
All the way around the U.
Yeah, yeah. Because that's what you see from the street. That's what you see from the street. You can't see this fence right in here?
No, ma'am.
This?
You can see this, but you certainly don't see this.
Right, okay. It's in the trees.
And what I understood you to say to start with was remove this one, put the fence in across here and remove the razor wire from here down to where the fence is.
So this is not razor wire right here?
No, ma'am, that's not even.
Okay, okay, all right. Okay. Okay, there you go.
I've got a picture of it right here. That's of that corner. And it's, you do see, you do see razor wire from the street. I mean, you do, because it cuts, cuts across. I mean, if that was a comment, I don't know.
And we can always hold this and bring it back and get it straightened out? I didn't know it was going to be this much.
Say that again?
I said, we can always hold this and bring it back. I didn't know that we were going to have this many changes. We would get it worked out beforehand.
Who would be wrong with taking the razor wire from around the edge of where the Dream Center is?
Okay. So you're going to remove all of this, correct?
Delete it from home right here.
Okay, razor wire.
So that's just saying along the east border of nineteen hundred?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Will you show that to Ms. Bernie and let her see if she's, okay, okay.
So the existing fence with the razor wire will be allowed to remain, provided that the razor wire along the east border of nineteen hundred North Locust shall be removed.
Okay.
Okay, you got that, Ms. Whitby?
Yes, sir. And so there's not razor wire up at the front on east nineteenth, at the south? The south side of that property, there's not anything right there in that little bitty nook? Okay, I'm good.
All right, do we have a second?
Yes.
All right, on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Height, those?
All right, how about a motion to adopt as amended?
So moved.
About a second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
No.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson? Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman.
Oh seventeen sixty-five, Council members Robinson and Taylor.
Hang on. Hey, Mayor, with sixty-five and sixty-six, these should probably be called in the reverse order because sixty-six has to do with abandoning a right-of-way and relocating that pursuant to the plan unit development. So they should be done in the reverse order.
Okay, without objection, call oh seventeen sixty-six, please.
Yes, sir, an ordinance vacating and abandoning the southern half of an alleyway running north and south between West Fourth Street and the north, on the north, and Rockwater Boulevard on the south, City of North Little Rock, first reading.
A motion to suspend all readings and a second on the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
About a motion to adopt?
So move.
And a second, Mr. Taylor, thank you. On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor, did you want your name on that?
Sure.
Without objection, we'll add Mr. Taylor's name to that. Okay, now sixty-five, Ms. Whitby?
An ordinance reclassifying property located at the northwest corner of Parker Street and Rockwater Boulevard in the City of North Little Rock from PUD and R4 to planned use development. PUD classification by amending ordinance number seventy-six ninety-seven adopting an amended land use plan for the subject property, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings.
Second.
On the motion to suspend.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
About a motion?
So move.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height? Oh seventeen...
Thank you very much. Ms. Farrell, thank you for your, all your hard work. It's a beautiful development. Okay, sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, Council member Taylor.
Please call it.
An ordinance granting a conditional use to allow car sales light in a C4 zone for property located at seventeen hundred East Broadway in the City of North Little Rock, first reading.
Move to suspend the readings. About a second.
Second.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Motion?
So move.
Second.
On, Ms. Robinson?
I just want to make sure that the applicant understands that he can only have five or six cars on that lot. Six cars on that lot, which includes the applicant car, if he has one, and visitors' cars.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
And if he has more than six, we can call code and they will probably shut you down.
Yes, ma'am.
Just FYI.
On the motion.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
On the emergency, Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.
Includes new business.
Thank you very much. Our only public comment tonight is Mr. Arden. Thank you very much.
I think y'all got real sticky with him. I told him to ride his bicycle to work. Mr. Charlie Height, why didn't you watch that on Internet? So you wouldn't have had to ask so many questions tonight?
Because my computer won't work, right? So I have to look it up on my iPhone, Mr. Arden, to answer your question.
Thank you. And we'll get a new doggy hotel and animal shelter. Could go out there and see if they're all lassened. Because there's a lot of dogs not lassened in this city. Mr. Clifton, we have a new term. Not councilmen, councilwomen. We have to call them, I mean, councilmen. Counsel, here we go. But anyway, they didn't correct you. Thank you. And I got a ticket several years ago because I was told that you couldn't work on your own vehicle and you are like, change your oil, rotate your tires. And so I had somebody in Dan's office to pull it. And apparently you have a code officer maybe giving tickets that aren't deserved. And Mr. Charlie Height said he would consider looking at it, maybe. I think we ought to be able to change oil.
Mr. Arden, before you go any further, how many times you called me last week?
Twice that you answered.
I don't remember me answering that I would consider doing something about it. I said I would listen to any discussion concerning it.
Okay, let's use the word listen. Let's use the word listen. But it didn't right for us not to be able to change oil as long as we dispose it. I'm hurrying, Mayor. As long as we get rid of it in a proper way, rotate our tires, and mind a repair. Next-door neighbor works on his car all the time. You can't get code to do anything about it. Y'all have a good evening. Oh, one more thing. Part of the building is cut in half. They started doing it after five.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ross?
This is just something to work towards. When we, you know, we do all these conditional uses, special uses and everything, you know, for the car lots and everything, and we'll say, you can have five cars and you can have six cars and you can have forty cars. No one has that information. So, and I know, Ms. Whitby, I've, on the business license that, you know, I've asked, and it's just something to work towards. If somehow we can get that on the business license, so when the fire marshal goes out to do inspections of the businesses, you know, they could look and see, you know, how many cars you're supposed to have or whatever. Or if code goes by, you know, they don't have all those individual legislation that we have, so.
I think that we can work towards that, especially with our new code officer coming that's going to work especially for Kirk Whitby. We should be able to figure out a way to do that. Taylor, will you figure that out for Ms. Whitby? Anybody else got any good for the order? Mr. Baxter?
On March twenty-seventh, this body passed oh seven twenty-three, which granted a special use to allow for an RV to be placed temporarily out in some territorial property, sixteen four hundred Harvey Watson Place. I couldn't recall, because I'm an old man, when we'd actually put the drop dead date on that, if you will. And it's actually August thirty-first. I went out there and looked at that piece of property on August the fourteenth and they ain't hit that a lick, not, not turned a shovel of dirt. So it's just something we may need to address here in three or four days.
I'm, I'm aware of that issue and we'll stay on top of it. Thank you. Because I, I went to bat for that guy, so I'm watching it. Mr. Height?
Mayor, I want to bring up something that you and I have had. And I don't want to, I'm not trying to blindside you on this, but you and I have had several discussions and I've brought it up at City Council a number of times in the last couple of three years. And, and up until recently, well, it, well, it deals with beggars on street corners. And up until recently, it's been about beggars that have been out on Highway sixty-seven, one sixty-seven and down at North Little Rock at Broadway and I thirty and other places. But a couple of weeks ago, they showed up in our neighborhood. Up on, I don't know if you saw them, up on Crestwood and up on North Hills and McCain, a lot closer to my house and your house than we're normally used to. And I've had a, I've had a number of people ask me to ask you, Arden, to, what can we do about it? And I know you and I have had some discussion that, that, that we're looking at some of the legal cases that are going on between ACLU and some of the other cities here in Arkansas.
I'll try to give you an executive summary, if I may, on where we are. Okay. Okay, the Supreme Court ruled that it was unconstitutional for us to remove those solicitors from the street. There was been a number of cities across the state that are trying to figure out a different way to do it, including us. And we think it's a, it's not a violation of freedom of speech, but it is a traffic hazard and a safety hazard for these individuals to, to be on our street corners. And so there has been two cities that have rewritten their resolutions or ordinances. And so, there has been two cities that have rewritten their resolutions or ordinances. And we are kind of sitting back to see what's gonna happen in those situations. We've been told that the ACLU is going to file another lawsuit against those two cities. So, there's no reason for us to jump into that lawsuit until we see how it's gonna come out. So, we are watching it every day. I don't like it either. And, Councilman, I'm pretty much on the head what I said?
Yeah, it's just, it's a challenging environment. People have the right to traverse rights of way. They have a right to hold a sign. They do not have a right to impede traffic. But then, what do you do when someone actually impedes traffic? You know, you can, you can take action then, but someone has to be there to witness it, to write a ticket or to take whatever kind of law enforcement action you're gonna take. You can't write someone, issue someone a citation for holding a sign. It's, it's your right to hold a sign. It's your right to stand on the sidewalk.
So, we're working on it. My answer to you and anybody else is that I don't like it either. You know, I just spent three or four days up in Springdale at a meeting, and they've got the same issues. I was in Fayetteville at the same time. They have the same issues. I know Hot Springs is one of the, and Bentonville are the two cities that have refiled their ordinances. So, we're gonna just see how that goes here in the next two years. And we sought advice from, I believe it's called NIMLA. Are you familiar with NIMLA? EMLA? What, the National Municipal Law Officers Association? International Municipal Lawyers Association. Yeah. Have you visited with them, or?
We haven't visited with them on this topic, you know, on point. We get case updates from them and communicate with them pretty regularly. Every, cities all across the country are challenged by this. And the, the signed decision that came down unexpectedly, you know, a year and a half ago, did not strengthen the position of the cities. It considerably weakened our position. So, that's, that's been a concern.
So, if we go at it from a safety standpoint of view about them impeding traffic or stepping out into traffic, that's, is that a, is that a different direction than we have?
And it's not really going at it. I mean, it's, it's, if someone's stepping out in traffic, I mean, we have rules about jaywalking and impeding traffic and things like that that people can't do. They're not supposed to do that. But it's, are you regulating that behavior? If you're regulating that behavior, yes, you can cite someone who violates the law. What you can't cite somebody for is for standing on the corner holding a sign.
I mean, I've been told, I don't know how much truth it is in this, that they've been dropped off in certain areas via a van coming from somewhere. And dropping them off... Somebody told me the other day, they stopped and offered the gentleman a job, and he said, how much does it pay? And he said, ten dollars an hour. And he says, I make more than that here. Yeah. You know, so...
One guy...
What I would encourage people to do is quit giving them money. And if they quit giving them money, then they might go somewhere else. Ms. Ross?
I just wanna say one thing too, though. I mean, as far as, not necessarily impeding traffic, but for safety hazards, I know I was at McCain in Warden Road, and they were running all in and out, and the cars were dodging them. And I called the police, and they did come out. And I don't care if they were holding a sign or if it was just somebody that was out there, it doesn't matter. It was a safety hazard. Cars were slamming on their brakes.
Oh, I know. I saw somebody the other day had two kids...
Definitely need to call the police for that. We do need to.
Had two kids with her, little kids.
Yep.
And a litter issue too. I mean, you know, there litter in those spots, those corners, and just need to clean up their trash. Ms. Whitby?
Wanted to remind you, to remind the public, that Monday is a holiday, and that garbage, trash, and recycling routes will all run one day delayed next week.
Okay, everybody hear that? I'm sure that our communications department will have that out on social media quickly. Okay, on the motion, to adjourn.
We don't have a motion to adjourn.
How about a motion, Charlie?
Second. So moved.
Ross?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
And Height?
Yes.